I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Pastor Christian Williams will lead us this evening. Pastor, when you are prepared, please proceed.
Thank you. I am Christian Williams, pastor of the Grove Church in the heart of Gladstone. If you know margaritas, then you can find us. So, thank you for having me. Let's pray together. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. I thank you for this commission and these men and women who serve on it. And I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to lead amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, that you would give them a keen thirst for justice and rightness, give them confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Please give them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray that you would guide them in the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live, work in, and visit our county. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte?
Here.
Commissioner Withington?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Wagner?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to that, Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve tonight's agenda as written.
Motion has been made for the approval of the agenda as written. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Comments this evening before the commission? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be retained and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless the commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On tonight's consent agenda, the first item is commission meeting minutes from June 6th and June 13th. Resolution 2024-201 is approving invoice payments for Clay County from June 15th to June 25th, 2024. There's a total of 498 invoices for the amount of $1,828,696.48. Resolution 2024-198, approving the 2024 Cooperative Agreement with Mid-America Regional Council. Resolutions 2024-200, approving the use of county grounds for the second electronic recycling event by the Clay County Prosecutor's Office and P.C.'s for People. Resolution 2024-199 is appointing members to the Building Code Commission. And Resolution 2024-203, the reappointment of a member to the Senior Services Board.
Thank you. Is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda, Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Is there any comment or discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Excuse me. Next on our agenda is our regular agenda, and we have one item that is 2024, oh, excuse me, 204. Administrator?
Resolution 2022, excuse me, 2024-204 is approving the purchase and capital project encumbrance request for a replacement vehicle and a trade-in with Joe Manchin's board for our public administrator's office. And Public Administrator Alexis Summit is here to answer any questions that the commission may have about this replacement vehicle.
Thank you. And thank you for also misstating the number. It makes me feel better that I'm not the only one who does that. Thank you very much.
This request is for a replacement vehicle for our office. State statute requires me to go and visit each ward that I'm appointed at least once a year, and so this vehicle, we need to go and visit wards. The current vehicle we have is a 2011 and is in need of replacement so that we can safely go out and visit wards in the community.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion, Commissioner Johnson? You are recognized.
Yes, I'd move to approve 2024-204.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-204. I can't get it right now. Is there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Next on our agenda are discussion items. There are three items this evening on for discussion, the first one being local marijuana sales tax audit, and that would be our auditor, who would be starting us off on that. Mr. Auditor, if you would please proceed.
Yes, Victor Holbert, Clay County Auditor. Let me pull this up here. So, this evening, I'd like to present an audit performed on the adult marijuana sales tax option for a county. This would be a county adult marijuana sales tax. I've labeled it here AMJ. That's the Missouri Department of Revenue's acronym for this code of type of sales tax. So, that's just how I refer to it here in short and as I did in the report. I want to say, you know, you probably read the report right, you know, by now, and it's pretty straightforward, so my remarks will be pretty brief. I know we all are waiting in anticipation for tonight's presidential debate, of course, so I'll move right along. But really, the reason for this audit was essentially twofold. You know, one, this was in your strategic plan, in the financial sustainability focus area, wanted to explore doing the sales tax on legalized marijuana. And so, this is, I had, you know, committed at that time to do that, so that's what this is. And then also, secondarily, I think it's of greater pertinence now because we have seen, just last month, we saw a couple court rulings in two circuit courts, St. Louis County and Buchanan County, that basically ruled in favor of counties. You know, a year ago, we were under the thought, as well, we should be in Article 14, the new Article 14 of our Missouri Constitution, that basically said that a local government, as it's defined, in order to have this sales tax, defines a county specifically as an unincorporated area only. And so, counties that enacted this sales tax after it was legalized were taken to court by some dispensaries. The courts ruled in favor of the counties, and basically, the argument that I could gather from what I've read and researched was essentially that the counties argued, look, all other county taxes are levied countywide. They're not just levied in the unincorporated area, so therefore, we believe we can do this countywide. And so, the counties initially ruled in their favor. I will note, it is on appeal, so both of those cases are being on appeal. And I'll just start with a caveat before I jump in, that of course, defer to our legal counsel for any official, you know, legal advice. But with that, that all being said, I'll go ahead and move on and move forward. This audit's going to be presented basically in three main sections. First, we're going to look at Clay County municipalities that have enacted the municipal 3% sales tax on adult recreational marijuana. We're going to look at really the body of the audit about the financial estimate. If the county were to be able to enact this sales tax of 3%, what sort of revenues could we expect on an annual basis? And then finally, we're going to compare what that looks like in Missouri with other counties. And then I'll end with a rating and open for questions, but of course, do feel free to ask any questions throughout. I'm happy to answer them. So, with that, we can look at the status of municipalities in Clay County. So, November of '22, Amendment Three passed statewide and in Clay County. And then so, in April of '23, eight cities in Clay County went to the ballot to their voters to approve the 3% local sales tax, and it passed by a wide majority in all those municipalities, roughly three quarters for, one quarter against 75%. You can see just kind of by the chart there, the highest approval rating was in Kearney, and the lowest was in the Kansas City portion of Kansas City. And it's worth noting as well that Amendment Three itself, in 2022, passed Clay County at a wider margin than statewide, you know, roughly close to a 10% delta there. So, what we can conclude from this, this being a review form of audit, I have to perform procedures in order to be able to make, you know, make a conclusion, so to speak. What we conclude from this is essentially, we see that voters in Clay County essentially approve of marijuana being legalized, and they're also fine with it being taxed for government purposes. But next, we want to look into what were the uses of the, of our cities that used marijuana that went to the ballot and received approval for a sales tax on marijuana. So, again, Amendment 14 doesn't really restrict what these revenues can be used for on the local level. The state did restrict how it could be used for things like veterans, you know, drug prevention and things of that sort. But on the local level, there are no restrictions unless a municipality decides to restrict themselves in how they put forward their ballot question. So, with that, we see that five of those eight municipalities had no restriction, just went to general revenue. Two of the eight did dedicate their monies to public safety, the City of Liberty and Excelsior Springs. Excelsior Springs had a dual purpose, though. They said, public safety as well as drug abuse prevention. And then Kansas City was unique there. They're the ones who did something different than all the rest. You could argue this might be a public safety component because they dedicated it to neighborhood quality of life improvements, but one of those components was violence prevention in neighborhoods, which you could argue is public safety. So, that just gives you a breakdown idea of what our municipalities in Clay County use their funds for. I should note, before I leave this last section, that I learned from the election board that North Kansas City, as you recall, was not on that list. They are going to the ballot in August for their approval to the voters, so that would make nine in Clay County. So, what can we conclude from this use? Basically, I would conclude that whether or not a government dedicated their, you know, their sales tax toward a specific purpose didn't really matter to voters. I mean, if you go back and look at the results, nothing really changed in the Excelsior Springs percentage, the Liberty percentage, the Kansas City percentage materially, so. So, moving on to the second section, this is kind of the meat of it, so what is the revenue estimate? What could Clay County expect if we were to go to the ballot and put a 3% sales tax on adult-use recreational marijuana before the voters? Had to work a lot with the Missouri Department of Revenue on this. We learned that there are 10 dispensaries in Clay County. Initially, Department of Revenue gave me a rough estimate without doing a ton of work themselves. Admittedly, they're very busy, and so we appreciate their assistance. They told me a high figure of $3.2 million. They told me that based on, it was hard for them because you had different effective dates of when these cities started collecting their revenue. They all went to the ballot in April of '23, but based on the paperwork and processes, they didn't start receiving those funds at all the exact same time. So, I decided to get a little more exact data, and I know that we have sales tax data for our own sales taxes from all businesses. It's certainly confidential, but in identifying those 10 dispensaries, we were able to calculate exactly what their total sales are of adult-use recreational marijuana, and we found that in the year 2023, it was about $60 million. There's an asterisk there because they actually didn't start sales until early February. The ballot passed in November, and that, and they were only able to start in early February, so it's not a full year. And then I looked at 24, five months of 2024, and I could perform an annualized calculation on that of 70 million. So, you can see here what the county sales taxes are from that half a million from 2023 from those businesses, annualized estimate 24, $620,000. If it were to be a 3% rate instead of our regular sales taxes of seven-eighths of a penny, it would be, you know, between 1.8 million and 2.1 million. I looked at this in a different way. I looked at, what if we measured an actual year period of data? So, from June of '23 to May of '24, it was roughly the same at about 2 million, like 30,000 under my 24 annualized estimate. So, I'm fairly confident in saying that what we conclude from this data is we could expect $2 million a year should these sales activities continue, because we don't have a ton of data as far as the trend analysis, the seasonal fluctuation for these sales. They seem fairly consistent, though, as far as how much we receive per month that we would expect. So, that's essentially my estimate. So, I wanted to check this estimate for its reasonableness, so we went to the third section. I wanted to ask pure counties to see what their revenues were like. You know, I had heard anecdotally that St. Louis County, a large county, was expecting roughly 3 million a year, and that's what made me question the estimate initially from Department of Revenue with Clay County. I thought our estimate might be too high. And so, I surveyed some first and second-class counties, feared, you know, thinking that they would be somewhat comparable to Clay County in terms of size. And what we essentially found was we had a sample size of six out of 25 first and second class, or a 24% sample. They gave me a total amount and the amount of months they've been collecting, so we could perform an annualized amount. None of the six counties restricted their funds. It was all for general use, and they all passed, of course. We looked at their population compared to Clay County, the number of dispensaries as well, and then what that comparison of their annual amount would look like compared to my estimate. And it was about, it was about spot on. You know, Clay County was the highest in this compared to the six, and I really questioned county number five, and I kept their names confidential just because, but, you know, a higher population than Clay County, but not as much sales. You know, time will tell. They have only had their tax in place for six months, again, with the St. Louis County estimate of roughly $3 million. I felt good about our estimate at 2 million. I read and researched that in 2023, the state of Missouri had a billion dollars in sales. And remember, our, my estimate was 60 to 70 million of sales in Clay County. That's roughly 6% to 7% of Missouri's marijuana sales. Our population in Missouri is about 4% of Missouri's population, so we have a little disproportionate, you know, marijuana sales, you could say, but that makes logical sense if you think about we're more suburban, urbanized, as far as where do dispensaries choose to locate. So, all that being said, the estimate looks reasonable based on the comparison with our, with some pure counties across the state of Missouri. So, with that, I guess I'll go ahead and conclude. I gave it a rating of four. The idea being, out of five, the thought is, you know, if you have, if you go to the voters in an election, that's going to cost something, you know, roughly $200, $250,000. I should point out that because none of you are opposed in the upcoming cycle, I confirmed with the election board that we have no election costs for 2024, neither the primary nor the general election. So, that's roughly $400,000 or more in savings. If you get 2 million a year, that's certainly going to offset a $200,000 election fee. There is the issue, though, this could be a political issue. Is this a sin tax or are we punishing something that's legalized? I certainly respect that. At the same time, when you look at financial comparisons, our neighboring counties, Ray County, Jackson County, Buchanan County, Cass County, all passed this in April of 2023. So, it's really just Platte County is our only neighboring county that hasn't passed this. I'm not sure about Clinton County. I didn't find that out. But, and then there's the legal matter, of course, right? There's a legal matter. It's on appeal. We don't know for certainty that this could be overturned and that we cannot stack this tax. So, if you were to go to the ballot, before we have that certainty, I would advise that you restrict the money. That's what other counties have done. They haven't spent a dime of it. They've just held it until they know for sure, and then that's how they've approached it. So, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you revisited the stackable part of it because I think that is something that we need to make sure that people are understanding, and that is that there are some taxes that are not stackable. And this one has apparently, at least under the most current judgment by the courts, they ruled that it is in fact stackable, but that still sounds like it's somewhat in play. So, I think your point that perhaps any revenues that come in while that issue is still alive and being debated in the courts, it would be best to hold that in suspense, and then at the point when we were sure about its legal status, then we would feel more free to spend it. I have a question that's really more about, it might be more about the state tax, so I'm taking you a little bit out of your depth, so I apologize for that, but maybe it's just as much raising the issue as anything. And that is, it is a consumable. I'm wondering, is there any regiment of regulation from the state that would talk about packaging and how much of each ingredient is in the way that a food, if we were going to be selling, you know, some kind of food product, you have the list of ingredients, and I'm not very familiar at this point with what is, how you would do that. For instance, if you were selling wine, you know, you have proof and that sort of stuff that would give you the strength of it. Is there, and it would seem to me that the proper way to regulate any of these is by having some portion of the tax money go into the regulatory regime required to make sure that there's truth in advertising, so when a consumer were to buy it, they would be getting what they were paying for. Do you have any, did your research, this is outside your area of expertise, but I just wanted to see if your research had uncovered anything in that line.
Yeah, so, no, I don't think so. I mean, the state tax is 6% instead of 3%, and to my knowledge, it's not really dedicated to regulation. It was more just to, you know, to certain things like veterans and drug education and abuse prevention programming. You know, I will say, yeah, this audit really looked at the taxable sales. I think it would be a different type of audit to look at, you know, are those sales being accurately reported based on the product? That would probably be more in the Department of Revenue's purview or the, or otherwise. So, no, I didn't really, you know, get into that aspect of it.
Like I say, it really is not within what your assignment was, so I just thought if by chance you came across something along those lines, I thought I would just see if it had come across, you'd ask one way or the other on that. And we're talking about the tax would only apply to licensed dispensaries, not any other. No, I don't know that anyone else can sell it legally, so is that pretty much? We've got a certain number of businesses to keep track of, I guess, is what I'm saying.
That's right. Yeah, my understanding is, you know, Department of Revenue has a pretty good handle on that with giving me an exact number and knowing who they are. And I think, you know, definitely, I think there are a lot of regulatory processes in order to even get started, and that in itself could be a subject of an audit as to how that process has been rolled out, probably more on a state level, because those are state departments that have that authority to issue those. But, no, we definitely know who the businesses are that are, you know, providing the legal marijuana.
Like I say, you're right. That is more of a state function. They have the deep bench to be able to do that, but just wanted to make sure that, like I say, there are purity standards, there are levels of whatever chemical standards, so a person can be an informed consumer if that's what they so choose to be. Commissioner Withington?
Hey, thanks for this information. Very helpful. And, you know, it looks like sales went up $10 million in one year. It's probably a good time to get into the marijuana business, so. So, I was just going to say, you know, I would be, I would be fine with us looking at stacking, but I would like to see us use it for our roads and bridges, some of that money. But, I mean, I think that's a bigger discussion we have to have. But as to the question of consumer labels, you know, as somebody who visits dispensaries every once in a while, there are consumer labels on the products, and if you Google "consumer labels marijuana in Missouri," you'll see that the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services have a, have facility packaging and label guidelines that are required. So, it tells you how much THC or CBD's in it, so it's not like you're just buying something and not knowing what's in it. I mean, that would be crazy, but, yeah, so, yeah, it's out there. You can find it. Just takes one quick Google search and you can find the Missouri guidelines, so.
Commissioner Lawson?
He's really knowledgeable about this stuff, isn't he? The thing is, like, I remember, it's been a while back, that some of the filling stations, if you went inside, they had brownies that had marijuana before it was ever, now that part, you're not going to regulate, and it's no big deal, but, but I think this is a phenomenal source of revenue. And, you know, like Commissioner Withington said, we could use it for roads and bridges. We could use it for our law enforcement, because heaven knows, they're going to have to be figuring out how to monitor all this now. There's, you know, there's no way, or I don't know if there is now, but there wasn't a way to be able, if someone was impaired driving, that they would have the ability to know that they were driving under the influence of marijuana. I think you'd have to take them and get a blood test or something is the only way.
So, I did, I inquired of the sheriff to, I was trying to see if there were any direct costs associated with the county to the question of, you know, what would, what purposes should we use for this? And he expressed that same thing about the challenge of, A, the training and the equipment, and I greatly appreciate his team's research on that, to positively identify that it was marijuana intoxication. And then also, the permissibility or the use of such evidence in the court is kind of challenging right now, is my understanding. But they have been able to identify some, you know, DUI cases, DWI cases associated particularly to marijuana. It wasn't a ton. Because of those challenges, it was only like roughly 10, I think 24 when it was as a secondary, out of the hundreds of, you know, DWI cases we have a year. So, those are some costs. I think he said something like 200 a case for that. That's not a lot of money. I know the prosecutor's office did, you know, Clay County was one of the fastest counties in the state to, you know, clear the records as the amendment required. That had a huge cost, but it was kind of a one-time, right? And so, we kind of did that really quickly. But, yeah, as far as ongoing costs with it, it's really kind of hard to estimate as far as, you know, what are the challenges or impacts we're seeing? So, yeah, the commission could certainly do something, though, like road and bridge or general revenue or however you see fit.
So, we would put that on the November ballot, correct?
Well, that's up to, that'd be up to the commissioners. I think we were probably past the August.
Yeah. I don't know at the time, and I would, I think that's a discussion for the commission to have. There are pros and cons to being on a November ballot with a presidential election, and so, but we'd have to look. And so, but we'd have to look at the...
You're right, yeah.
The timetable, well, the schedule of when you'd have to certify, that we'd have to get that to the election board. And I think, should the commission choose to do that, one of the things, and you may want to have that discussion about how you would use the funds. But I agree with our auditor that because of case law that is potentially under appeal, if we did it and started collecting it, you know, we would set it aside until, you know, it gone through the court system. And so I think if, if it is on the ballot, then I think we really want to be transparent about that, that it's going to go for road and bridge, but unfortunately, we might not use it for road and bridge until the court cases are done. So, I mean, you have to have all those discussions about how you would want to proceed and how you would communicate that to the voters.
Oh, oh, definitely. Oh, oh, definitely, yeah. You know, we want to be cautious until something was valid, that we know we couldn't proceed and use money. But, but I, I think it's a great idea. It's a great source of revenue. You're, you're only taxing those that are using, and it's not like it's a citywide thing or countywide thing. You know, it's, if you use it, you pay for it, and that's the end of it. So, so I think it's a great, great idea. Just wish that we could have something solid and concrete, maybe before we do it, to say, let's proceed and not go ahead and start collecting and then have to worry about paying it all back.
Mr. Counselor, I believe you have something to add?
Yeah, just a couple quick observations. I believe last day for certification for the November ballot would be Tuesday, August 27th. So we've got about two months, I guess exactly two months. The, the appeal notice on the St. Louis case was filed on May 2nd, so just about two months ago. The process tends to go slow. Nothing additional has really been done. No, no filings have been done yet. No briefing has been done, no, obviously no argument has been done. I would expect no sooner than spring of next year, maybe into summer before there's a decision would be an appropriate timeframe for an appeal.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Auditor Hurler. That was very helpful and to get a sense of, you know, expected revenue. And I appreciate you sort of double, triple checking, you know, different ways of looking at it. And so it's helpful to know. I guess just on the topic itself, I have shared my concern with the commission before about how high our sales taxes are around here. This, of course, is in effect a sales tax on a particular type of product, but it's a sales tax. You know, my wife Midori just got back this morning from California. Glad to, glad to have her back. She was out in San Diego and Los Angeles. She's got some family in both cities, so spent some nice time out there. Because this is an issue I care about, I, I requested, and she kindly obliged to sort of pay attention to, to the sales tax rates out there. At one time, we both lived out there, so I had a sense of it then, but never paid over 10%. In fact, never over, never paid over 9%. It was always under 9% in sales tax. I, and this is, you know, high tax Southern California, never paid over 9% there. I regularly pay 10%, 11%, 12% sales tax, up to 12 and a half percent here in Clay County, So, you know, we've talked before about best ways to fund the government, the idea of sort of diversifying income streams. You know, you can do that. The three main ways are through user fees on things and fines and penalties, that kind of thing, property taxes and sales taxes. The truth is, at this point, for our core county budget, we, we fund almost exclusively through sales taxes. Now, we do, you know, have some user fees and whatnot, and we do get a little bit of property tax revenue. But as a percentage, it's a, it's a very low percentage, so sales tax dominant. In my view, I'm not overly excited about sort of exacerbating that dynamic by increasing our sales tax dependence to fund our operations, particularly when our sales taxes are already through the roof compared to where most of the rest of the country is at. You know, in my, now fourth year here on the commission, I've never supported or proposed a tax increase, not once, very proud of that. There's a little bit of an exception with the 911, though I, I really see that as a switch out, you know, replacing one, one tax with another. So I personally am not too excited about doing this tax increase, particularly a sales tax increase, and those would be my concerns on it.
Commissioner Wagner?
Uh, thank you. I, I, I think I'm somewhat ambivalent on whether to do a tax or not. I think I feel more comfortable knowing what the law ultimately says. It strikes me that even if we were to put something on the ballot this year, knowing we wouldn't get a real, really a resolution to it until spring or summer of next year, by that time, you're not really collecting a whole lot at that point anyway. So I can defer or go for, it doesn't really matter to me. As most counties are, have it, I'm not exactly sure that we, that we gain much or, or gain anything by not having the tax. I'm not exactly sure. People have made a rush up to Clay County to buy their products because we didn't have one. I kind of find it like cigarettes used to be, or probably still are, you know, you're just going to buy them when you feel like it. The only thing I will say though, that I feel fairly strongly about is, as we talk about uses, I do understand the logic behind identifying specific things that it pays for, can pay for. But as I have the many graphs that, that show our structural imbalance of expenses and revenues over time ingrained in my head, I'll just remind everybody that sometimes we just need to pay for stuff, and the cost of that stuff goes up faster than the taxes that we do get in and other revenue that we do get in. So I will just make the play for, it's not sexy, it's not fun, it's not something that you have a great graphic for, but just basic stuff that we have to pay for within this county just keeps getting more expensive. And if, if this becomes a way to pay for those salaries for everybody that's sitting on that side of the room, there's a certain value in, in, in talking about that and talking about those sorts of uses of funds like that. I'll echo everyone else. Mr. Auditor, thank you for the work. Appreciate that. Been very helpful in our discussion this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
So I too want to thank you for the work you did on this. I really appreciate it and all the information you've shared. I'll, I'll start off by saying I consider myself to be a fiscal conservative, and I guess I'd say I'm on the side of the taxpayer. And I am not a big fan of taxes, I'm not a big fan of raising taxes. Certainly there's a necessity for taxes, but I think taxes should go for necessity, and we shouldn't collect any more than we have to. And like Commissioner Carpenter said, this is in fact a sales tax, it's additional sales tax to a very high sales tax area that we have already in the county. So I'm not normally a big fan of this kind of thing. However, I do take exception with this one and would support a sales tax on this for the following four reasons. And I'll, I'll list them for you in, in order of weakest argument to strongest argument. The weakest would be, first and foremost, that this is a recreation activity in sense. It's recreational marijuana, so we're not taxing basic living needs. We're not taxing food, we're not taxing, you know, your bread and your milk, we're not taxing your rent, that kind of thing. It's, it's for people to have the extra money to go out and participate in this recreational activity of, of purchasing recreational marijuana. Secondly, the impacts of any drugs, whether it's marijuana, alcohol, or other harder drugs, on our society are, are clear. I mean, that's, I don't think we can even dispute that. It has an impact on our community, on our society, particularly on law enforcement. And, and I don't think we could dispute that. So I think if, if it's going to have that kind of impact on law enforcement, on, on public safety and other areas of society, that we certainly should have to have their fair share of, of paying for that impact. But probably the most compelling, one of the most compelling arguments to me is that those who were in favor of this and pushed for this initiative back when they were campaigning for this, the number one issue they campaigned on was that medical marijuana will bring tax revenues to the cities and the counties. And I just went back and did a quick Google search to confirm that. And you look, any, any, any word just about, is, I'll say the number one, the number one benefit of legalizing marijuana, and these are the pro marijuana, and I was not pro marijuana, I was against this, but it's part of our constitution now, but the number one argument was, hey, this is going to benefit our communities because of the tax revenue that it will bring in. Well, if that's the case, then we got to bring in the tax revenue based on that. I mean, they told us that when they sold us this, when they sold us the taxpayers, that this is why you want to vote for this, because it'll bring in tax revenue. So if that's the case, then we should be able to, to collect on that tax revenue. So that's why I think that's the exception. And probably even one more compelling is it's not a decision that we will make, it's a decision that the people will make at the, at the ballot box. So for those reasons, I would support putting this on the ballot. Thank you.
And I want to join the entire commission in commending you for the good work. It's certainly what we've come to expect from, from your work product when you present us with the information. I find myself identifying the most, as far as comments made up to this point, with the, the comments of Commissioner Carpenter. I think it is rather a philosophical point, but I think it's an important one nonetheless. Philosophy is, is where we start to make our decisions. One of the things that occurred to me while I was listening was, what, do, do we have a county tax on alcohol? I don't know that we do.
There's no special county sales tax on alcohol. It's just our standard county sales tax that we have on every product.
Exactly.
I'll, I'll add that.
Please.
We do have licenses, which is unique with...
There's license, yeah, licensing fees, that kind of stuff. That's, while it can be construed as a tax, there is a different structural protocol for that. But the reason I bring that up is because one of the things, my God, since I was a teenager, that you, you heard was marijuana and its equivalency to alcohol. So we're talking about similar substances. We have a sales tax on alcohol. We do not have a special tax, except in the case of some fees or whatever. And so whether you do or do not agree with that particular comparison of the two, I, what that does, that leads me to the, to the conclusion, at least initially on that point, that a special tax on this would then kind of, kind of be contrary to that argument that, well, recreational marijuana and recreational alcohol use, there's an equivalency there. So if there is an equivalency there in the public mind and in the thoughts of the people who are trying to go for the legalization, then I think that we have to be consistent in that. The other thing is, and it's something that I, I often find disconcerting when it comes to arguments made on any number of issues about whether something should be allowed or whether something is going to happen, whether it's development or whatever, and the argument is made, think of the tax revenues. My, what rings in my head when I hear those arguments that, well, yeah, but look at the revenue we'll be bringing in. Our job is not to just see how much money we can, we can absorb out of the economy, how much we can in fact tax people. Our function should be, if we do the right thing and we are enacting good policy, in my maybe naive way of looking at it, the revenues will, if we are fiscally responsible, take care of themselves. So I think that, that's, that's something that I really have some concerns about. It gets to be a bit of a, of a slippery slope. I'm not closed minded on the idea of a possible sales tax. What I would think is, if we were to go down that road, I think we should use any monies, whether they're licensing fees or whatever, to, to first off, offset any negative, any negative effects of it. In other words, for instance, the sheriff's increased burden to enforce the law, but I really, it doesn't sound like it's enough to really justify this. But if we were to go forward on this, and several people have already talked about what their thoughts are and how those revenues should be used, I would feel most comfortable if they were used, at least in part, to add to the funds that we got on the opioid settlement so that we can start doing some more positive things when it comes to opioid addiction and, and what is currently one of the largest scourges on our youth. I would think that would be, I'm not saying that marijuana is equivalent to an opioid, but it's the same kind of general conversation. I, I don't know that that would necessarily tip my opinion, but it would certainly make me a lot more amenable to know that it was going for something for basically a, I hesitate to say a new problem or a new use, because we've always had drug issues come up, but it does at least make it feel as though we are dealing with a problem that is very, very serious. And in all honesty, the opioid settlement money we got was not exactly a king's ransom. So those are kind of my thoughts. I do think that we need to allow this issue to mature a little bit, to see how in fact the courts do end up deliberating on this. So I would, my personal opinion is that we wait until we see how the issue is going forward. There is no big hurry. I think a November, November ballot issue would be premature and, and maybe a little precipitous. So I would, I would say we need to, to study this out a bit more and understand the issue better before we rush forward. Anytime you, you levy a tax on people, I think it has to be done in a thoughtful manner. I agree with Commissioner Carpenter when he used the example of the 911. It was in fact a substitute of an existing one. It's a little bit like removing the, that was a little bit like removing the tax on buggy whips and taxing, you know, automobiles. It's, it's, you know, they are, landlines are not a sustainable source of, of revenue going forward for a, a service vital to our citizens. That's, I, I agree with your assessment that that was a substitute, not necessarily a new tax, but I, you know, again, reasonable people can disagree. Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, I'm, first of all, I didn't really look at 911 as a, a tax at all. It was just a, a fee that was, if you were using a cell phone, which we all do, it just helped with the 911 expense that we see rising every darn month. But aside from that, I don't look at this as a tax that's going to hit everybody. You know, Fred Smith out there with three kids and, and he and his wife both trying to make ends meet and take care of the kids, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, that guy probably isn't running to the marijuana store and buying a bunch of, a pot so he can sit around and smoke it. He's too worried about whether his kids have food. So you don't want to tax somebody like that. You don't want to tax whoever doesn't use it. It would only be those who use it would be faced with that additional tax. And, and you know, it's a huge industry. My gosh, when you think about how much money, how much revenue came in on those sales in just a short period of time, if you put all the money in the general fund and you gave people raises and you helped the sheriff's department and you got roads and bridges fixed, the services that we're trying to do for people, and we sit here and say, I can fix that guy's road this month, that guy's got to wait for three years, and they're paying the same damn taxes. So if we can have this sort of revenue coming in, and it is dispensed, if I can use that word, it is dispensed in a fiscally responsible way, then I, I don't see the problem in it in any way, shape or form. I, I think that there have been things that I've complained about openly and loudly that I feel we've done that were far from fiscally responsible. So if we can do that, I think this is something that is a great source. It's only taxing those who participate in the sale of the marijuana, and, and that's all. It's not, not taking some little old lady that's barely making ends meet, like myself. And it's not hitting up, you know, a, a young family that's struggling to make ends meet. It's helping to make their life a little bit better if we get that, that money in. So I think you're, I think you're directly correct when you say we ought to be cautious about how we proceed at this because we don't even know we can get it yet, you know? So until we know that, but I think it's something that can sit out there on the radar, we can investigate a little bit more, see how it's done good, or how, how it really has been utilized in other counties of comparable size. And then once we know that, and then, you know, we go further ahead. And then once we know that, and then, you know, we go further ahead. But Victor, thank you so much. As always, a fantastic job. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. By the way, Commissioner Lawson, when I say go forward in a, in a, in a thoughtful manner, one of the examples that come to mind is the way you and, and other commissioners handled the, uh, senior tax assessment freeze. Um, we went through that in a thoughtful manner, and I think we came out with a very good product, and I think we did the, the best we could by the people. Um, I just have one last thought, and that is, as far as taxes go, there is no end to the good you can do with other people's money. With that, thank you once again, Mr. Auditor, and we will, uh, move on to our next discussion item, unless you had something to add, Administrator.
Well, if we could, um, Commissioners, so, um, great report, great discussion. Um, again, going back to your strategic plan, the target date, um, that is identifying the plan is fiscal year 2025, um, in essence, to do something with that. Um, so my thought process would be is, as we bring forward the 2025 budget, uh, we will put in the draft budget a potential election cost, um, that you could go to the ballot in 2025. That gives us a period of time then to find out more information, what's happening on with the court cases, and gives you an opportunity to dive in and roll up your sleeves a little bit more about if you want to proceed and what, and how would you want to identify those funds, um, and how those would come forward. So that would be my recommendation, based on your discussion tonight, um, unless you want to do something different.
Is that the consensus of the commission, that we proceed along those lines? Seem to be getting head nods. Is there anyone who, uh, would prefer not to do that? Commissioner Johnson? Oops, I'm sorry. Let me go back. There you go.
Looks like Victor left it. Oh, there he is. Was there some advantage of, of putting it on the ballot sooner than later in, in November?
The, the only comment to that, I, I would say is that, you know, we have no election cost in August and November, so that's roughly, you know, $400,000 of savings. However, I would say that we, we don't really have any other upcoming elections until 2026. So I mean, unless you wait until 26, and presumably there are elections at that point, where you could basically not pay for the election because you already have an election, um, there will be a cost with the election at, at any point between now and August of 26, presuming there's.
So that cost will always be the same, pretty much then, between now and then?
Well, you, we could time it in 2025 that we'd actually go on an existing ballot. Municipalities will have elections. Um, so while we'll bear a cost that we normally would not do, it's not like we are the only thing on the election and we're doing the ballot all by ourselves. So if we do decide to move forward in 2025, I would suggest that we could maybe time it with municipal elections, so that we're sharing the cost. But you're, um, the auditor is correct, and we normally would not have election costs next year if we didn't have anything on the ballot.
Okay, and then I'm curious, is, if you, Victor, have a, a recommendation on when it should go to the ballot?
I'm, I'm really, you know, ambivalent on it. I, I present you the numbers. I think, again, the financial, um, analysis is, is easy. I mean, uh, you know, to, to Commissioner Wagner's point, it's not a ton of money in the grand scope of our budget. It's really not. Our, our general sales taxes are up, you know, or use taxes are up $2 million over last year. I mean, just in that alone. However, that being said, I mean, the longer you wait, that's, that's money that other counties have been earning and sitting on and earning interest on, uh, that whole time. And so, um, you know, the longer we wait, the cost is, we're not getting that revenue. Um, but at the same time, we have legal uncertainties and we have no scheduled elections until 2026. So I mean, it's, but to pay $200,000 roughly, it depends about the turnout, and then you allocate it based on what's on the ballot. So a municipal election, to the Administrator's point, there are going to be a lot of other political subdivisions on that ballot to share that cost, and it's going to be a lower turnout, uh, more than likely, just based on history. So, I mean, e, you know, even maximum 200,000, you know, 2 million in a year will easily, you know, be a, a good financial decision. So, uh, you know, I'm ambivalent. Um, I don't think there is a rush until we know legal uncertainty, but based on the examples of all these other counties, um, two have been sued, and that's not where we want to be, but they also, you know, prevailed, so.
Commissioner Johnson, I believe the counselor wanted to add something to your comments. Mr. Counselor?
So to, uh.
Oh, go ahead and hit your microphone.
I went off. To your last question, I think, uh, the auditor touched on it a little bit, uh, that your question was, is there a benefit to doing it sooner? Uh, we would, the sooner you, it's on and voted on, assuming it passed, the sooner you collect money.
Right.
If we were to follow the, the model of other counties, we wouldn't necessarily expend it, but it would, it would, it would go into the, into the coffers, for sure. Uh, so the money, whatever that, that amount is, would accumulate. So that's number one. Number two, I, I, I thought about my answer earlier about the appeals, and I wanted to maybe say a little bit more about that. So, uh, it's at the first level of appeal right now. The, the court, the appellate, or, you know, court, uh, often, typically, the court that it's at would be the final court. This issue, I strongly suspect, will end up the Supreme Court. Uh, so I, I, I think it's, I didn't want to be disingenuous, the more I thought about it, I think we can assume a second layer of appeals, uh, with a real possibility of finality not being reached until, I guess, maybe '26. Um, I think that's a real possibility, just because this issue is constitutional, it's got a lot of eyeballs on it, it's an interesting issue, uh, would not surprise me at all for the Supreme Court to take it after the first appellate court makes its decision. So I, that would add a, a significant layer of time beyond what I'd said earlier.
Yeah, well, thank you, and, and I'm fine with the Administrator's suggestion. Very good. If there are no further comments or anything else to add to the discussion, we will move on to our second discussion item, that would be planning notification requirements, and that is from planning and zoning. Mr. Jones?
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So a couple of weeks ago, uh, we discussed the written notice, uh, requirements for my department, so we thought we would bring it back, uh, see if there was consensus on one of the three options that were discussed last time, or keeping it the way it is. So I'm going to have the three options for you. Um, just to remind you, the, uh, current land development code requires that we notify every property owner within 1,000 feet. Uh, this fir, first scenario would basically create special cases, which tend to be the mo, more controversial cases that we deal with. It would, uh, increase that notification to 1,500 feet if the case, uh, was a conditional use permit, included commercial or industrial zoning, or a subdivision of land creating five or more lots. So we would still have the 1,000 feet for the other cases, this would kick it up for the more controversial cases. Uh, the next option, um, would be where we sent at least 25 letters per case. Um, so the way I came up with 25 is we averaged the number of letters we sent over the last two years, that came out to be about 23 letters per case, so I just pulled 25 out of the air. Um, and the way this would work is, we would keep that 1,000 feet, within that 1,000 feet, if we hit the 25 number, we stop. If we don't, we increase that distance at intervals of 500 feet until we get to that 25 number. Now, that number could be changed, obviously, to increase or decrease, um, but it would require that we send that many letters per case. And then option number three, um, would be just to increase it to 1,500 feet for every case. Um, and here's the three options that I did, just discussed, and I would be happy to answer any questions, and really, I think what we're looking for is a consensus, if you would like to move forward with one of those three options, or keep it the way it is.
With that in mind, would anyone like to start the discussion on the commission? Commissioner Johnson, you look like you're, there you are, your finger was poised over the button.
Since no one else is speaking up, I actually like one and two both. In other words, can you do, can you add two to one for those? For those, uh, let's see. Oh, never mind, it's automatic 1,500 for that, isn't it? And then if you add the second one, so my concern is, where you have, don't, don't have a whole lot of res, don't have a whole lot of, um, notifications, I think a minimum of 25 is good in any situation.
So, yeah, I think you could add to, uh, uh, option number one and add the, you know, the, the text that we must reach 25.
Should that ever happen.
Uh, and go at the 500-foot intervals until we do.
It's fine with me, works for me, but. Commissioner Carpenter?
I, I love that idea. I think we should do that. I support that. Thank, thank you to Director Jones.
Commissioner Lawson?
I'm, as usual, I'm all confused. Okay, so you're saying, uh, not so worried about the commercial industrial. Well, uh, five or more lots, then it's 1,500 requirement. Number two, 1,000 feet minimum, but extended in 500, uh, feet intervals until at least 25 letters reached?
Yes, ma'am.
So if I've got a, um, I've got a, uh, area where they've got 50 acres and they want to put homes on that, it's going to be five acres, uh, per property. The people around there, there's six or seven homes around there that are on 50 acres also. They don't want to see that little five-acre thing come in. So when you send it out, are you going to go 1,000 feet like we've always done? But if there's more than 25 letters, then it goes 500?
So in that case, we would go out 1,000 feet, and it, if it was 25 or more letters, we would stop. We would just do the 1,000 feet. If it came back with six letters, like there were only, there were six massive parcels around there, then we would extend that to 1,500 feet from that subject parcel and see how many letters that generated. If that was 12, we'd go another 500 feet until we got to 25 letters.
I, I just see it, what happened in there is that you have those individuals who live near a large acreage, and they've got 25, 30 acres, whatever it might be, then I see them suffering because you're only going to go the 1,000 feet. You're not going to go, uh, if there's not that, if there's not 25, if there's 23.
Hey, Jerry, can I respond? Absolutely. I'm sorry, let me go ahead and open your mic.
So I think what that does is this, the 25 letters at 500-foot intervals, I think that's for situations that we're talking about. We have rural areas where you only have a few people live in, uh, you know, close by because it's on a big acreage, so they, they have to extend it out further until they're reaching a minimum of 25 people. Uh, and that could be several, you know, big lots, that were, you know, big pieces of property that we're talking about. Also, in the scenario that you gave, um, because it's five or more lots, uh, Platts with five or more lots, which is the scenario you gave, I think it was five, that would automatically require 1,500 feet anyway. So it'd be a minimum of 1,500 for your scenario, plus, if there's not 25 people around to notify, then he expands it, another 500 feet, another 500 feet, until he reaches 25, which is, which is really what, would, would impact the rural areas.
The, the, the commercial and industrial is what bothers me, um, at 15. I, I think I'd just like to see it at 15 to get, at the get-go.
It is, it is.
Okay.
So it would be combining number one and number two.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. But that says, commercial and industrial.
Right.
Not residential.
With Platts with five or more lots.
Oh, and Platts, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, I apologize. That was a needless comment. Forget I said anything.
Um, I think that Commissioner Johnson has hit on a, I think, a, a good and reasonable way to approach this issue. Um, my inclination is, and, and to allow further discussion if it is required, but to, basically, I think that's a, a good baseline for us to start from, but, um, certainly I want to make sure that we open it up for discussion by anybody who cares to express an opinion. Is there anyone who, uh, wouldn't care to join the, the discussion? If not, then I, I would, uh, I would like some, uh, reaction on whether or not that should be our consensus view expressed to staff to go forward with. I'm getting head nods. Okay, we seem to be getting a unanimous, um, nodding of heads, so, um, do you feel as though you have, uh, the proper instruction, uh, to go forward with that?
Right, I think we'll be combining option one and two together with some verbiage. We'll bring that back to the commission for, um, authorization and adoption.
Exactly. I just want to, I'd just like to make sure that you feel as though you have the information you need to go forward.
Yes, sir.
All right, that being the case, um, that brings us to the third and final option, or, excuse me, um, item on our discussion items, and that is focus area update, employer of choice, and that would be human resources. Please proceed.
During the evening, Commissioners, can talent.
Oh, go ahead and turn on your, there you go.
HR Director, good evening. All right. So in today's competitive job market, uh, attracting and retaining top talent is crucial. This presentation will explore why Clay County is an employer of choice. We want to foster a culture of performance excellence with the following goals. First being, conduct a pay and classification study. After the RFP was presented and approved by the Commissioners, the bid process was conducted and McGrath was selected to conduct our pay and classification study. Just this week, we finished up our kickoff meetings, uh, with the directors, department heads, and office holders. Our next step will be employer, employee engagement. We will send out a county-wide email explaining the process, and then we are going to start position questionnaires on each position. So we're looking at, uh, this being done, hopefully, the end of the year, but it, it's got a good start. Uh, let's see, so, another goal is maintain a high deductible healthcare plan, and currently we have 88% employee participation in our, uh, high deductible healthcare plans, which we have to, to choose from. So we are continuing to educate employees on the benefits of a high deductible health plan during open enrollment and also doing, during new hire orientation. So we continue to expand on employee well-being, for instance, offering the onsite counselor, uh, so employees can take preventative steps to be healthier, focus on the five pillars of well-being, which are financial, physical, mental, social, and community. Uh, one of our goals was to create an intern program. So our internship, internship program has been implemented, and we're in the process of educating our department heads, our supervisors, and managers with the procedure for applying for the intern, and also the best use of an intern. Uh, we're building, uh, relationships with educational institutes, institutes to present opportunities at the county, and also in the future, we're looking at developing career pathways for interns to become full-time county employees. So we continue employee recognition, appreciation, and morale programs. In 2023, the employee recognition program was implemented, and the awards are presented annually at the commission meeting in May during the week of the public service appreciation. So twice a year, we present service awards to employees, celebrating their years of service in the county by five-year increments, and we just passed out June awards to 32 employees, and five of those employees got 30-year awards. So that was pretty awesome. Three of them were in the sheriff's office. Uh, we're also collaborating with communications for a employee newsletter to highlight employees and departments along with social media recognition, and we're currently doing employee spotlights on retirees. I don't know if you've seen it on the website, but if someone retires, there, there's a spotlight, and we also have it on ADP's front page. Let's see. Okay, and we are creating development opportunities that reflect the, the key values of the organization, with the goals being establish leadership development programs for emerging leaders across the organization. In '23, we started participating in the Emerging Leaders KU Program. We sent seven employees to attend the Leadership Academy. We did follow-up, and we had, uh, favorable results from the participants, so we are continuing with this program, and we actually just selected nine employees that we're going to send to the Fall Acad, Academy. Let's see. And also, we provide a variety of training opportunities. We are focusing on. We are focusing on creating a variety of different formats for training, onsite, virtual seminars, and conferences. Currently, the Road and Bridge Department is implementing a CDL training program. Workers' compensation training has been conducted throughout the county. Just this month, we conducted it at the Parks Department for the Parks employees and also for the Golf Department. So next, we're going to be going to the highway and have everybody done by the end of the year, so that'll help us with our workers' comp cost. CPR training is provided annually for employees, and currently, the tuition reimbursement program, it's available to employees for college coursework and also for skill certificate programs. And this is our key performance indicators, our employee turnover rate. It benchmarked at 10%, but we're actually at 8%. We're working on Employee Satisfaction Index, and our average number of days to fill a vacant county position right now is 50. Our goal is 45, but right now, it runs about 50. So in the end, we want to convey that working for Clay County is more than a job. It's an opportunity to make a real difference in the lives of our residents. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. That's a very good report. Couple of things cross my mind as you were going through some of your points. One is as far as interns go, I think at one time, there was some consideration that we might involve ourselves with the CAPS program, Center for Advanced Professional Studies, through the North Kansas City School District and some of the others as well. So just a thought, as far as leadership, two programs that come to mind. One is the Donovan Program, which I think is being rejuvenated through William Jewell, and I believe the Northland Regional Chamber also has a leadership program. Whether they fit the particular needs that are being expressed here at the county or not, obviously, is a judgment call that we would like to hear, but those are just some alternatives that cross my mind that we might consider and see if they are a good fit for us.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. I am curious about this Employee Satisfaction Index, and I don't know if there's much you can mention about it, but I'll at least make the request that whenever that index is created, I'd love to see it, as I'm sure others on this commission would, to kind of understand how that works and what that tracks. And then, this is not part of the presentation, but I can't resist asking, how many vacant positions are we trying to fill currently?
Right now?
Yeah.
Let's see, the last I looked, we have 12 requisitions right now. Of course, that is one requisition for an operator one, but they have several openings. So, you know, you could say 12 plus five for that.
Yeah.
But the last that I looked, yes, there were 12 open positions.
Gotcha. The indicators here are very helpful. I just wonder if, and maybe this is the wrong phrasing, but turnover, understanding turnover is important, understanding the number of days of filling those positions are important. I'd love to know whether it's on a key performance indicator or not, but I think just knowing the number of vacant positions, I think is also important to track. So whether it's in, as part of a key performance indicator or not, I mean, I understand, we will always have vacant positions, but that would seem to be another great number to know as well. But otherwise, thank you. It's fantastic. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Wagner's point, as far as those positions which are open, it might be instructive also to know, you know, kind of broadly which departments, and also are we talking about entry-level or higher-level positions so that we can kind of think in terms of where our emphasis needs to be. But quite honestly, you know, for at least myself, I would be, you know, depending on the advice of staff on something like that, because I am not a personnel expert by any means, but I think that might, that might help us to understand the problem a little bit more readily and be more supportive as staff goes forward, as it begins to resolve some of these issues.
One thing I can say is, my recruiter and I went to Mark last month, and they started a pilot program, hard to fill positions, and there were several other counties there, Johnson County, Jackson County, the city of Kansas City, Overland Park, HR people there. And they're all looking for engineers, you know. When we were just trying to find a straight engineer for the Highway Department, couldn't do it. Now we're looking for a director. And we have it in 26 universities. We have it on, I mean, I can show you the list, I can send it, and we're paying for places to post it. We got one. It's just, it's just like, but they're all like, I don't know where they're at, you know, and labor jobs, EMTs, paramedics, and...
CDLs.
CDLs. You know, we're all like, I need them too. Where do you find them? And then healthcare workers. So it's, we're all in the same boat.
We are kind of in unprecedented times as far as being able to fulfill our labor needs in almost any sector.
And I can also tell you, though, on some of our jobs, I get, you know, 25, 50 applications for a clerk position that we had recently.
Interesting.
So it is, it's...
Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah, you're right. No matter where you go, whether it's to a restaurant or whatever, they're always saying, oh, we're short of help, we can't get help, and I don't understand, where are they getting their money to continue to live? To me, after we had our meeting last May, I think, in my mind, the most important thing out of everything that we do should be the employee satisfaction. Where are we on our employee satisfaction? That would be my top priority to find, because maybe we're losing them because they're unhappy, maybe they've got a better source of income somewhere else, who knows? But if they aren't happy, we aren't going to keep them, we aren't going to have them. Look at the Highway Department.
Right.
Oh, we're desperate out there. So I think I would, what I want to see out of all of this is what is, how happy are our employees? Truthfully, how happy are they, number one? And, you know, what can we do to make this more livable? And there's a lot of good information in it. You've done a beautiful job, and I think all of the components are there, but just how do they fit with our existing employees? That's the one thing I think is painfully missing from this, and I'd like to see.
Absolutely.
Would any other commissioners like to join the discussion? Now...
What? Sorry?
This is informational. You're not seeking consensus on any item. This is just an update, as if I understand correctly.
Yes, that's correct. This is just an update. Included in your packet is a more detailed presentation with the status of various initiatives that departments have identified in this particular category. So as you look that over, if you have any questions, please feel free to, you know, contact staff departments. Some of them are department-specific, many of them are county-wide, and so HR is sort of the lead on those particular items. And with regard to the Employee Satisfaction Index, so Gallup has one, which is a pretty reasonably accepted industry standard when it comes to surveys that you send out to employees with regard to satisfaction about their job and where they work. The other thing, and I will stress this with Kim and her team, there are exit interviews, so to Commissioner Lawson's point of, for those that are leaving voluntarily, you know, why are they leaving, where are they going? So we do it by paper. We also offer to do it in person to do that, but again, it's optional, and so we don't, we're not getting a lot of response from employees that are leaving the organization to share with us information about that, but we're hoping that will grow.
If there are no further discussions or further comments, we will go ahead and conclude this, which concludes our discussion items. That brings us to county administrator comments. Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a couple of items. The first item kind of tailgates into being the employer of choice. So next week is July 4th celebration. The county recognizes Thursday, July 4th, as a holiday, but we will also be closing on Friday on July 5th, so an extended weekend in celebration for our employees, for a four-day weekend. Hope they have a safe and happy celebration for the 4th, and we wish that for all of you. The next commission meeting will be Thursday, July 11th at 6:00 PM here in the chambers.
Thank you. With that, we will go to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Withington, if you'd like to start things off, please.
I just want to say, I hope everybody has a good Fourth of July holiday, and last week, I had the chance to go and tour the Kansas City Internet Exchange. You guys probably, if you guys don't know, it's down in North Kansas City, and, you know, we hear a lot about data centers like Google and Meta because they're spending $2 billion in our county, but the Kansas City Internet Exchange and KC Fiber down in North Kansas City, they actually have the largest network connections in North America. They have over 1,200 internet connections in their data center. They're growing so rapidly that they're expanding their data center from 25,000 square feet to 150,000 square feet, and they just signed agreements with companies in Germany and Belgium to expand their international connections. So it's good to see, you know, a small business making such a huge impact on the tech scene. You know, we're getting a lot of technology companies in Clay County. Oracle really screwed us, but it's good to see other companies stepping up and filling in those gaps. So, you know, just keep up the good work, those guys, and if you guys ever have a chance, you guys should take a tour of it.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah, I had a...
I'll go ahead and hit your button, please.
Oh, sorry.
Here you are now on.
I had a very enjoyable breakfast this morning. I went to the Job Corps in Excelsior Springs, and the young people there fixed the breakfast for us. Unbelievable pastries. These kids are amazing. Of course, I'm a horrible cook, so there's, you know, no basis for comparison there, but I was amazed, you know, some of them were like 19, 21, just kids. And several of them were going to leave that facility and go to California for more advanced training. So they're doing that with everything. They have carpentry, they have all kinds of skills taught. There were two massive railroad cars sitting back there, and one of the young men was there from Alabama, and he said that he was training to do something with the railroad, and as soon as he finishes that, they will put him to work, a huge salary. This kid came from nothing, and so it was so gratifying to see all that they had done. I was highly impressed because these kids didn't have a good background, but as they stood up and spoke, they were so confident and so excited about their future, and they were very well-spoken. So they're doing an amazing job. I really appreciated the opportunity, and if any of you have a chance, you should go there and tour it. It's a wonderful facility. Other than that, I hope everybody has a wonderful Fourth of July, and God bless America.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, and I just want to echo those sentiments. 248 years is a pretty good run, and hopefully we'll make 250 and beyond. But as we celebrate, I just want to remind our citizens to also be good neighbors, because not everyone has the armament that some have, and so please be, please be kind to your neighbors as you celebrate this country. It is worth celebrating, but you also got to see your neighbors the next day, so be good to them. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I won't go on too long of America's the Best Diet tribe today, but since we don't have a meeting next week before the 4th, I'll just briefly reiterate that that is my position. Great, amazing country that has delivered, helped deliver peace and prosperity across the globe this past century, that has made life on planet Earth greater than it has ever been, and we may be used to that, but, you know, this world has not always been full of peace and prosperity, and the United States has played an integral role in making that happen, and I'm very proud of that fact. And, you know, our auditor mentioned we got a presidential debate tonight. Obviously, we've got a bit of a divisive election coming up here in the fall. I don't think anybody doesn't know that. What I do hope, though, is that we come through it as united and together as we can in love of our country. You know, there are folks out there, sort of at both ends of the political spectrum that, for maybe for different reasons, but they sort of agree that America kind of sucks, that America's in decline, and that they have their various reasons for that. I think they're wrong. I think they're incredibly wrong. I think it's the greatest country in the history of the world by far. I don't think anything else comes close. Proud to be an American, proud to celebrate it next week, and I'm going to be proud up to and through Election Day this fall. Thanks.
Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yeah, along with the rest of the commissioners, I certainly want to wish everyone a safe and an enjoyable Fourth of July. One of the things that strikes me, and it usually is, it comes up more during Christmas time, and that is, we seem to get so tied up in the presents and all the camaraderie and all the good fellowship, that sometimes the observation has been made that we have forgotten the reason for the season, as it's said. I think the same applies to July 4th. I think it's a great time to get together, it's a great time to celebrate. Certainly, we will be entertained by any number of fireworks displays. Certainly, our dogs will be very entertained by that, but I would ask everyone to take a quiet moment and contemplate what it is that we are in fact commemorating, and that is something that's been referred to for a very long time as the American experiment. We are an experiment. We are, we are, the idea of America is as new as it was 248 years ago. Thank you for the math. 248 years ago. Like any process, while there may be some that think we are in decline in some ways, it is a continuum. We ebb and we flow, but we, I think, as has been said in the past, our best days are ahead of us. I think we should contemplate on that we cherish those institutions that we are going to be exercising, most particularly our right to vote and to choose the leaders and those who we give responsibility to. So certainly, take it, take some time and understand that this is not just about fireworks and hot dogs and having fun. This is about one of the most bold experiments in human history, and that shouldn't count America out yet. We have a lot of good days ahead of us. With that, that brings us to the next item, executive sessions. Is there a motion related to our executive sessions? Commissioner Johnson.
I would move that we go into executive session for personnel and contractual issues.
Motion's been made that we go into executive session under Missouri statute 610.0213 personnel and 610.02112 personnel, and to adjourn therefrom. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
With that, we will now go into executive session under the before-noted items, and we will adjourn from there. Thank you.